Okay, let's see if we can get up online. Yep, mark you up. Steve? All right, good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, November 19th, 2024. It's now 10:00 a.m. We're there for a special session at the Hunt County Commissioners' Court. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order and ask Commissioner Martin to lead us in prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to our flags. Please stand.
Shereba, our most gracious heavenly Father, we give thanks unto thee. We thank you for the gift of life. We thank you for the great country that we do live in. May we make decisions which are righteously. In Christ's name we ask all these things. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, everyone. We have Commissioner Hutchins, Monroe, Martin, and Harrison present. I'm Judge Stovall. I'll be presiding over the meeting today. At this time, we'll have public testimony. Speakers are limited to three minutes and should conduct themselves in a civil manner. The Commissioners' Court cannot take action on items not listed on the agenda in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Concerns will be addressed by county staff. They may be placed on a future agenda or addressed by some other course of response. Representative Gil Dutton, come forward. Thank you for what you're doing in your service very much.
Thank you. Well, thank you for having me and thank you to this court. You guys are doing some really good, hard work. There is no greater service than serving at your local county level, and I commend every single one of you for doing that and for stepping up when you are called. But today, I'm here because I wanted to honor one of your members, Judge Commissioner Philip Martin, for his service here on this court. You have served selflessly, truly, your community as a retired DPS officer and for 20 years as Commissioner here in Hunt County. So I wanted to just honor you today with a flag from Austin and a certificate, just thanking you for your service. Thank you so much, Philip.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, please.
I don't know if he wants us in it or not.
Yeah, you can come on, Doug.
It's just my de facto thing after those presentations.
Yeah. Let him do that.
Let them do it together. We'll ruin it with our faces.
All right, anybody else wish to speak at this time? If none, I'll close the public testimony. No old business, no, under new business, no consent. Calendar, we got any things from the Auditor's Office today, Mary? Okay, we need to approve it, though.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioners, I need approval of accounts payable.
Make a motion, repay the bill.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action item one, the canvas of the November 5th, 2024 general and special elections. Jeanne Ash.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Thank you for having me. I'm here to discuss and possibly take action on the canvas for the November 5th general and special election. Before I begin, I want to note that the special election results were on behalf of the Town of Merit Incorporated. If it's okay, I will proceed with the calling of the vote totals. President, Vice President, Donald J. Trump, J.D. Vance, absentee voting 769, early voting 25,414, election day voting 9,954, for a total of 36,137. Kamala D. Harris, Tim Walz, absentee 484, early vote 6,856, election day 2,872, for a total of 10,212. Chase Oliver, Mike Turmott, absentee 6, early voting 134, election day 97, for a total of 237. Jill Stein, Rudolph Ware, absentee 2, early voting 70, election day voting 45, for a total of 117. Sharonda Fox, Harlan McVeigh, absentee 0, early vote 0, election day 0, for a total of 0. Claudia De La Cruz, Karina Garcia, absentee voting 0, early vote 0, election day 1, for a total of 1. Cornell West, Melina Abdullah, absentee 0, early vote 0, election day 1, for a total of 1. Jessie Queller, Wesley Lastly, election day, I'm sorry, absentee 0, early vote 0, election day 0, for a total of 0. Peter Zonski, Lauren Onak, absentee 2, early vote 20, election day 4, for a total of 26. Shiva Ayurade, Crystal Ellis, absentee 0, early vote 1, election day 1, for a total of 2. United States Senator Ted Cruz, absentee 734, early voting 24,484, for a total, I'm sorry, election day 9,133, for a total of 34,351. Colin Allred, absentee 486, early vote 7,340, election day 3,241, for a total of 11,067. Ted Brown, absentee 19, early voting 516, election day 440, for a total of 975. Annalise Rocha, absentee 0, early vote 8, at election day 5, for a total of 13. Tracy Andrus, absentee 0, early vote 1, election day 2, for a total of 3. United States Representative District 3, Keith Self, absentee 686, early vote 22,965, election day 7,806, for a total of 31,457. Sandeep Suravastava, absentee 375, early vote 5,971, election day 2,375, for a total of 8,721. United States Representative District 4, Pat Fallon, absentee 94, early vote 2,366, election day 1,998, for a total of 4,458. Simon Cardell, absentee 50, early voting 381, election day 350, for a total of 781. Railroad Commissioner Kristi Kradic, absentee 753, early vote 24,581, election day 9,196, for a total of 34,530. Catherine Colbert, absentee 406, early voting 5,996, election day 2,395, for a total of 8,797. Hawk Dunlap, absentee 7, early vote 725, election day 488, for a total of 1,220. Eddie Espinoza, absentee 14, early vote 388, election day 270, for a total of 672. Richard McKibben, absentee 0, early vote 12, election day 4, for a total of 16. Justice Supreme Court Place 2, Jimmy Blacklock, absentee 759, early voting 25,235, election day 9,638, for a total of 35,632. DeShawn Jones, absentee 411, early vote 6,429, election day 2,705, for a total of 9,545. Justice Supreme Court Place 4, John Devine, absentee 746, early vote 24,986, election day 9,472, for a total of 35,204. Kristen Van Weems, absentee 423, early voting 6,555, election day 2,801, for a total of Justice Supreme Court Place 6, Jane Bland, absentee 748, early vote 24,581, election day 9,184, for a total of 34,513. Bonnie Lee Goldstein, absentee 403, early vote 6,184, election day 2,570, for a total of 9,157. J. David Robertson, absentee 15, early vote 815, election day 553, for a total of 1,383. Presiding Judge, Court of Criminal Appeals, David J. Shinick, absentee 744, early voting 25,013, election day 9,472, for a total of 35,229. Holly Taylor, absentee 420, early vote 6,525, election day 2,788, for a total of 7,000, I'm sorry, 9,733. Judge Court of Criminal Appeals, Place 7. Gina Parker, absentee 737, early vote 25,066, election day 9,518, for a total of 35,321. Nancy Mulder, absentee 414, early vote 6,279, election day 2,619, for a total of 9,312. Judge Court of Criminal Appeals, Place 8. Lee Finley, absentee 752, early voting 25,182, election day 9,577, for a total of 35,511. Chika Aniam, absentee voting 9, I'm sorry, 396, early vote 6,136, election day 2,516, for a total of 9,048. Member State Board of Education District 12, Pam Little, absentee 753, early voting 24,970, election day 9,545, for a total of 35,268. George King, absentee 406, early voting 6,370, election day 2,684, for a total of 9,460. Senator, State Senator District 8, Angela Paxton, absentee 719, early vote 24,462, election day 9,471, for a total of 34,652. Rachel Mello, absentee 448, early voting 6,795, election day 2,853, for a total of 10,096. State Representative District 2, Brett A. Money, absentee 744, early voting 24,184, election day 9,380, for a total of 34,308. Kristen Washington, absentee 433, early voting 7,065, election day 2,968, for a total of 10,466. Chief Justice, Fifth Court of Appeals District, Justin J. J. Koch, absentee 748, early voting 24,750, election day 9,382, for a total of 34,880. Stacy Williams, absentee voting 405, early voting 6,506, election day 2,782, for a total of 9,693. Justice, Fifth Court of Appeals District, Place 2, Jessica Lewis, absentee voting 750, early voting 25,052, election day voting 9,581, for a total of 35,383. Robbie Partita Kipnis, absentee 399, early voting 6,095, election day 2,527, for a total of 9,021. Justice, Fifth Court of Appeals District, Place 5. Cynthia Barber, absentee 740, 24, early voting 24,864, election day 9,456, for a total of 35,060. Erin A. Nowell, absentee 410, early voting 6,320, election day 2,672, for a total of 9,402. 9,402, yes. Justice, Fifth Court of Appeals District, Place 9. Matthew J. Kolodowski, absentee voting 727, early voting 24,683, election day voting 9,306, for a total of 34,716. Tina Clayton, absentee 412, early voting 6,406, election day voting 2,732, for a total of 9,550. Justice, Fifth Court of Appeals District, Place 10. Earl Jackson, absentee voting 731, early voting 24,662, election day voting 9,309, for a total of 34,702. Amanda Raycheck, absentee 404, early voting 6,395, election day 2,703, for a total of 9,502. Justice, Fifth Court of Appeals District, Place 11. Gino J. Rossini, absentee voting 725, early voting 24,528, election day voting 9,159, for a total of 34,412. Kim Cooks, absentee 409, early voting 6,472, election day 2,810, for a total of 9,691. Justice, Fifth Court of Appeals District, Place 12. Mike Lee, absentee 735, early voting 24,859, election day 9,431, for a total of 35,025. Ken Mulberg, absentee 397, early voting 6,150, election day 2,538, for a total of 9,085. Justice, Fifth Court of Appeals District, Place 13. Emily A. Muskel, absentee voting 724, early voting 24,652, election day voting 9,262, for a total of 34,068. Tanya Parker, absentee voting 407, early voting 6,344, election day 2,678, for a total of 9,429. Justice, Sixth Court of Appeals District, Place 2. Jeff Rambon, absentee 745, early voting 25,509, election day 9,776, for a total of 36,030. Justice, District Judge, 354th Judicial District, Kelly M. Aiken, absentee voting 772, early voting 25,168, election day voting 9,805, for a total of 36,195. District Attorney, 196 Judicial Court, Noble D. Noble Walker Jr., absentee 776, early voting 25,560, election day voting 9,767, for a total of 36,093. Joel Littlefield, absentee, I'm sorry, Judge, County Court at Law Number 2, is Joel Littlefield, absentee voting 762, early voting 25,499, election day voting 9,705, for a total of 35,096. County Attorney, Scott Allen Carnon, absentee voting 757, early voting 25,289, election day voting 9,708, for a total of 35,754. Sheriff Terry Jones, absentee voting 777, early voting 25,669, election day voting 9,878, for a total of 36,324. County Tax Assessor Collector Randy L. Weiniger, absentee voting 794, early voting 25,550, election day voting 9,831, for a total of 36,175. County Commissioner, Precinct 1, Mark Hutchins, absentee voting 206, early voting 5,954, election day voting 2,059, for a total of 7,859. County Commissioner, Precinct 3, Gary Smith, absentee voting 206, early voting 6,948, election day voting 2,778, for a total of 9,932. Justice of the Peace, Precinct 1, Place 1, Wayne Money, absentee voting 442, early voting 15,995, election day 4,439, for a total of 20,876. County Constable, Precinct 1, Richie Valenzuela, absentee voting 643, early voting 22,926, election day voting 7,887, for a total of 31,456. County Constable, Precinct 2, Michael Benson, absentee voting 175, early voting 6,425, election day 2,433, for a total of 9,033. County Constable, Precinct 3, Eric Quals, absentee 280, early voting 10,789, election day voting 3,800, I'm sorry, 3,585, for a total of 14,654. County Constable, Precinct 4, Matthew Reagan, absentee 319, early vote 13,039, election day voting 4,599, for a total of 17,957. Hunt County Proposition A, for absentee voting 8, early voting 218, election day voting 114, for a total of 340. Against absentee 5, early vote 430, election day voting 270, for a total of 705. Of the votes cast for the general election, there were 323 provisional ballots. 31 were accepted, 292 rejected. Of the votes cast for the special election, there were 3 provisional ballots, 2 accepted, 1 rejected.
You want to take a breath?
Yes, sir.
Good job.
Thank you.
Any questions, Commissioners? Entertained motion for the approval of the canvassing of the November 5th, 2024 general and special election.
So move.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action Item 2, approve participation in statewide opioid settlement with Kroger. Daniel?
All right, this is a settlement with, that the AG put together like they have for the last few opioid settlements that we've done. Hunt County doesn't actually have any Krogers or any stores that would be part of this, so it's not clear whether Hunt County will get any, anything from this. But like with the other opioid settlements, the statewide settlements, the state is asking that the county participate because part of the terms of the agreement is that all the political subdivisions that could have followed the suit, which does include Hunt County, release those and then participate in the statewide settlement. It's not clear if any money will ever come to the county through this particular settlement, just like the one that we did a while ago with the participating in the Purdue Pharma Sackler family one that ended up not going anywhere because it was rejected by the courts. I would advise the court that it's an appropriate thing to sign on to the statewide settlement for this case.
We got any costs associated with it?
No, none. All of the costs were borne by and will be paid back to the Attorney General.
Any questions, Commissioner?
I do have a question in reference to this. Basically, if they see fit to give us a part of it, even though we do not have Krogers, is there a special place that we need to put that money if we receive it by law?
Yes, there's a lot of strings attached, and they're the exact same strings as all the other settlements. So it had to be spent on very specific things. It had to be kept separate, spent on very specific things that really come down to diversion and treatment. And so the county could spend it in conjunction with other counties or other subdivisions, including cities within the county or adjacent counties or cities to put toward treatment programs or other diversionary things, like pretrial diversion for people caught with opioid-based drugs or other drugs. It has to be spent on those things only.
Okay, also, is there a stipulation in reference to it, if there is funding, that this has to be beyond that funding that we normally would have or not?
I'm not, I don't know if I understand what you mean. Are you saying?
Basically, we have to spend the money beyond if we already give money to that organization. We cannot even be inclusive of this. This has to be, we can't change our budget in reference to it. That's my question.
That, I understand what you're asking. That particular restriction does not come along with this because those things that we spend can be changed up or down in the regular budgetary process. And so it's different from, I think what you're thinking about is when we get.
Grant money or anything like that, yes.
For specific police functions or other. Public safety functions. You can't use that money to replace what's in the budget and then lower the spending and the tax rate and everything based on that. This is completely separate and different. It doesn't come with that particular restriction.
Good enough, thank you.
Anything else? Entertained motion for approval?
So move.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action Item 3, identifying approved projects for MOU preparation to oblige remaining RFP funds by December 31st, 2024, and all related issues. Tracy, you'll brief us on the latest report.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Good morning, everyone. Today, my name is Tracy Graham, and I'm here representing Grant Works. And basically, the reason for this meeting for us is to make sure we, we can go over the report if you all like first, but what I want to impress upon the Commissioners and the court today, we have to obligate these funds, identify projects, and get these MOUs in place before December 31st. If these MOUs are not in place, those funds are not considered obligated, and the funds can be recaptured by the Treasury.
Daniel, can you help us, or Tracy want to, about the MOU has different than our normal MOUs?
Yeah, Tracy and I talked about that a little bit. That's part of what she started to talk about.
Okay, or she can explain it, or you can't either way.
With the MOU, it's pretty much like your agency agreement. So it's basically you all will be doing a, so for instance, at the last meeting, you all identified some projects that you'd like to use the additional funds for. What the MOU would do is put those, put a scope of work basic, or put, we could make it some general points, but we do need to have some specific projects in those MOUs because RFPs may need to go out for some of these projects. There may be additional things that have to be done, but procurement is probably one of the largest things. So with the MOU in place, you'll have the opportunity to have these funds until December 31st, 2026, to expend. If these MOUs are not put in place, or these interagency agreements are not put in place between a certain department or between the city, you know, it could be city and city or Public Works or whomever. But again, these need to be in place in order for these funds to be available, to be expended through December 31st, 2026.
Okay, good, thank you.
And I will go over the report. I know everyone doesn't probably have it in front of them, but just to kind of, we'll go to, there's about 6.7 million available. That's the, that's available to actually put towards projects, so 6.7. And some, yes, you have a question?
That's not inclusive of the interest, is it, that was born?
Oh, no.
Okay, last, I believe it was last week we had, we were talking about 3.1, basically restricted and unrestricted, so this has gone up?
Because again, the radio project was at 2.4 million.
We divided that in reference to that. Did that money come back in?
Yes, sir.
Good enough, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, any other questions, Ed?
Okay. As far as the projects were, did I need to go over what you all discussed?
Commissioners, y'all.
I'm sorry, I thought you were going to continue with the report, Tracy. And so on the 6.7, how much of that, what's the restricted versus unrestricted portions?
We have, because we're taking the 1 million out. Let me pull it back up.
It's 2.126, 211, 21.
Yes. Because we took the 1 million out of that.
That's restricted?
Yes.
And the remainder of the 6.7 is unrestricted?
Yes.
4.653, 015.
You're saying 4.653 is?
4,653,015, excuse me.
I didn't do the.
That's unrestricted.
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 You say 2.126?
It's on the last page of.
It's on page 9 of 14.
Of the report. 9 of 14, yes, thank you.
Okay, and the 2.1.
2.6 is the restricted.
Those totals are on page 9.
Restricted.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and that's 2,100. Thank you.
Yes. Yes.
All right. I guess we now need to discuss what we're going to do.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioners, my recommendation is that we dedicate all this money to our Pudding Hill project. And the reason I say that is, first of all, we've been talking about this project since early 2023. We voted unanimously to buy their property, we voted unanimously to set aside money to spend on it, which is now, some of that has been pulled away from that fund, and we voted unanimously to hire architects to design the building. So we've spent 3 and 1/2, 4 million dollars on the project already. And the whole purpose of the project was is because we don't have hardly any room in any of our facilities and a lot of our facilities are deplorable, especially the voters administration. The building she in is probably at least 100 years old as a child. It was the old Greenville Seat House and it was never very much of a building. A lot of people think it's probably something worth preserving because of the age of it, but it has, it was never built for what we're currently using it for. And the newest building, of course, is our county jail that has never been good since the beginning, since the day it was open. It needs to go away. We need to get a new jail at the appropriate time when we can get the support of the community to build one. But it's, it's 22 years old. This building is over 40 years old and most of it is still the old jails that we can't, they're too expensive to go in and try to modify that for any use at all. And the only part we got is pretty much this out in here in the juvenile park. And then you go to the courthouse, it'll be 100 years old in 2029 and has had very little restoration to it done, just repair work that's had to be done. And it houses our four courtrooms. And our four courtrooms, the two district courts at least are swamped. They've been telling me for several years that they're going to have to have another court at some time. And if you've ever been up there on jury call, you know you have to sit on the stairways. There's no room to go sit in, there's no proper place to go. It's confusing at best. It's not, it's not a good working situation, hadn't been for years. Our DA, they're out of room, they're required to have a victim's assistance officer in room, that they don't have a place for them, so they have to share an office. And if the victim has to come to the courthouse for trial, they have to go in somebody else's office and do a makeshift room for them. So particularly if there's a child or something, they roll the TV in or something to entertain them. We have no place to do that in either of our county attorney or district attorney's offices. And when there's a trial going on that affects them and they're not in the court, they get to stay in this victim's assistance room so they can get updates and be informed of what's going on, but they don't, they can't go necessarily into the courtroom. Sometimes because they're called as a witness. So the DA and the CA, they don't have, they don't have a conference room. They have to makeshift in all their conference rooms, they have to just make it up in somebody's The county court law two, that's across the hall from me, their courtroom is very small. Their jury room is the old vault and it's very small. And the judge has been on me ever since I've been here to get him another more room and get him another jury room and we have no place. Our IT department, it's got four people, two of them that were sitting over there a minute ago. Those four people are all over the courthouse in offices. They can't all be in one off, we don't have an office for them to be in one office and it makes it very inefficient. Our HR department has three people in a room that's probably half this size, maybe a third of this size. We had a review of our human resources department three years ago probably, and they did a polling of our employees and the results were not really good for us. And a lot of the complaints were they didn't, our employees didn't think they could, they didn't feel comfortable going to the HR office because somebody might see them there. Or if they went there, there's no privacy in the room because they're all sitting right in the same room. There's not a room where they can go and talk private with the head of the HR department. And our HR department doesn't really even operate like I think an HR department should operate when you've got 400 employees. We don't have any training, we have no training officer, we have no training rooms. So as we get new employees and the changes in technology, we don't have anybody except the department heads if they have any expertise to do training or send them to some training outside. And if we had an HR department that had some space and a person that could do training, we could gain efficiencies with our employees and better educate them. And I think it would make all our offices work a lot better. And our county clerk is out of room for all her books, her books mostly are down on the first floor, she's on the second floor. If you go up there to her office and you need something, you have to sit outside on a bench with a clipboard and fill out your request because there's no room inside her office to do that. And there's no more room for her books. And I didn't realize this until she told me about it when this first was talked about a year and a half ago. She has the most traffic of anybody in the courthouse, except on days when we have a jury call. People go up there constantly to get a marriage license, a copy of a birth certificate, look up documents, whatever. They have people coming and going on my floor, I see people coming and going all the time. They get complaints because there's no parking downtown, they have to come through security and it's, and it's difficult at best for them to come make a simple trip and task. So they feel like that, you know, that is not a comfortable situation, plus they're on top of each other. They don't have any more room to grow, they're totally out of room for their books, their books are already downstairs in another place, they're up on, some that are old older, they're up on the fifth, fourth, fifth, fifth and sixth floor, some of them are over here, that we don't even have access to them immediately. So I mean, that's, that's not a very good situation at all. So, you know, then our other departments that aren't even in the courthouse, we had the VA's offices, which supports all the local veterans, that asked for help to get any of their filing with the feds to get some services, whether it be retirement money or health, health insurance or health assistance with health. And they'd been in a corner of an office, I guess, in the jail up until two or three years ago and we moved them out and rented a spot out at, out behind Tony's and all in that strip center behind it. And that's been a really good move and the sheriff needed the space at the jail, but it was awful that our veterans had to come into the jail to get services. It just, it was a terrible look. Our voters is in horrible office, I already said that. The health clinic, we have a health clinic, a lot of people don't even know we have a health clinic, but we do. It's in a 600 square foot building behind Super One and on Stonewall Street and they've got four people in there working, I think, and there's no privacy and they do a lot of physicals for school-aged kids and athletic, physicals. And they do, we have a grant with the state that we do free vaccinations for back to school for the kids. So all of this to me just shows and reeks of how inefficient we are. And even though it costs money to go build a building, it also costs money to operate. And without the efficiencies and we continue without the efficiencies, it's not even going to get any better and it's not going to get any cheaper. And the county, the Texas Demographic Center just sent out the total population of counties and places in Texas from July 1st of 2023 to January 1st of 2024. We are the fifth fastest growing county in the state of Texas by this report. This is done by Texas, Texas Demographic Center, University of Texas at San Antonio. We are, we have grown, we're growing at 18.8%. We have grown, in 2020, we had 99,956 residents. As of January 1st, 2024, we have 118,717. We have, from 2010, in 2010, our population was 86,367, 2020, it was 99,956. That's a growth over that period of time of 13,589. In four years, we've grown 18,761 people and it's not slowing up. And if we wait two more years at that rate, we're going to be over 125,000 population and we're going to need more and more services, we're going to need more and more people, we're going to need more and more staff to accommodate it because the county, we don't do anything except provide a service. We just do the things we're required to do by law. We don't make up rules, we don't pass ordinances, we don't, we don't have the authority to do most things. The only thing we really have the authority to do is provide services. 60% of our budget, 60% of what we do is enforcement, incarceration, prosecution and adjudication, all law enforcement related. 60% of our budget is spent there. 10% of it goes to the roads, then we got voters, we've got the county clerk's office, we've got the tax office, we've got the VA's office, we've got all these other offices that we're required to keep up. We don't create any new things, we're just trying to keep up and do the job that we're required to do. And I'm old enough to remember, it ain't been that many years ago, but probably 15, 20 years ago, Randy can tell me, we used to have to take a tab over there to get your car registered or to get a title transfer because they didn't have enough help over there. And you could wait for two or three hours to get a simple thing done and the public didn't like that. And we can't go back to those times. We don't want, nobody wants to stand in line for a service or at the clerk's office for hours to get a simple document. That's not what we need to be doing. And I just think this is one heck of an opportunity to spend money that's not coming out of our tax dollars pocket and it's money that we'll never get again and it will take care of the, of about half of the cost to complete the project. And we'll, we'll be able to get it done and it's going to take, we're still probably 18 months, two years away if we got it approved quickly. We're supposed to have complete architect's plans next month, bid plans by early next year, hopefully bid it in the spring if we have everything in place and it'll be a 12 to 18 month completion time. So if we wait and put it off now and we have to wait two more years or three more years to get it or go for a bond and we can't, then what are we going to do? We don't have any options. This is the best, this is the best opportunity that I see that we have to complete a good project that the community needs and, you know, the, we tried to buy a building downtown two years ago, three years ago, and our seller was talked to and he backed out of selling it to us because they didn't want any more government offices downtown. Because our people don't, the people that bring in like the clerk's office, they're not going to even go buy a cup of coffee anywhere, they're just coming in, taking a parking places and going somewhere. They need people that are traffic and that can grow the downtown, our downtown has grown more in the last two or three years than it has in the last 30 or 40 years. And it's, and I had, I had two different groups come into my office last week, one Monday a week ago and one last Wednesday. Both of them wanting to do projects around the courthouse, both of them wanting to rent parking spaces from the county because they need parking to make their deals work. And I can't, we can't let them have any of our parking, we use our parking. Told them they were free to use it at night, but weekends, but during the day, you know, we need it. We never know, on a jury call, you can't find a parking place downtown. So it's, it's a huge problem, we haven't addressed it in years. Frankly, we hadn't had the money until the last five years. We had, let's see, where did I put that? Historical data, our tax rate in 2016 was 53 cents. This year it's 32 cents. So with our growth, our tax rate has gone down, of course, our revenue's gone up, our revenue's almost doubled in that 10-year period of time, which, you know, is, but that didn't even start doubling until the tax rate started falling in 2020, it was still at 50 cents. 21, it went down to 46, 22, 42, 23, 36, 24 is 33.6 and this year is 32.3. So it has constantly been going down and it is as we have more growth. And, and we're going to continue to grow. I don't, I don't, I sat on the board at the COG, it's the, it's the, it's Mobility Committee, Regional Transportation Council, and the projections that they're giving for this region are huge. I mean, they're telling us by 2050, the metroplex could grow another 50%. And it's already at 8 million people, that's another four, four, is it 8 million people? I think it's 8 million people. Be another 4 million people in this region. And this interstate in four or five years when that thing's completed, Rockwall's the fastest, no, excuse me, Kaufman's the fastest growing county that's in Texas, Rockwall's second. And they're just barely behind Kaufman and they're filling up fast. They're a small county, there's not a lot of development room left in Rockwall County and those roads coming at us, we're going, we're going to see growth, this continues to grow. And if we don't get, start getting in front of it, we're in trouble. So Commissioners, that's my, my recommendation and I'm happy to answer questions or hear other comments.
We're supposed to have a 5% increase, that's what the average is in actuality. I didn't bring the paperwork with me, but there is, there is, it's coming, we know that. Over the past 24 years, basically, we've looked toward the future. In fact, we bought the high-rise over here on the west side of us where all that was going to go at one time. We have it all rented out in reference to it. We had the clinic mentioned a while ago, I didn't know the clinic was going over there during the discussion.
It's not, it's not going over, I'm just saying, I was just listing things that we need to address it and we haven't addressed that yet, but it's not part of this.
Looking into the future, basically also what we did is we bought this additional land out there for the future part for jail, that's out by Maryupuddin Hill. In actuality, that took place and we've spent a lot of money in reference to trying to find where to build for the future. In fact, that was decided within the last several years. I did have some information that I couldn't understand, I know that there's other people wanting money and all this, but in the past, if you look on this, the RFP status report that's dated November the 14th, it basically tells whether we spent restricted, unrestricted and all this throughout this whole type of situation. But it did blow my mind that basically we had given ministries as far as food ministries and stuff like that, I think it was 350,000, 325,000 and all this, but I did not, was not aware that they were not in actuality associated with the Lake Area Ministries Food Pantry. I didn't know that until a couple of weeks ago, but basically they have to come up here. So I thought I'd brought that up, would bring that up because if anything was given, I think it ought to be shared with the southern part of the Hunt County since they have a 70% as far as property level down there. And so that actually blew my mind. Did you all know that?
Phillip, that was.
Did you all know that?
Phillip, we had, we, y'all all pointed, no, we asked Phil Dukes to get us a committee of about 10 people made up across the county and they helped, they were people that, well, I mean, it's people, most of Ros Lane and David Bench and Randy Tarpely's daughter, lost her name, Amy, Amy Wade. There's several other, I mean, there's 10 of us, I can't think of all the rest of their names right off the top of my head. But all of them had experience in doing grant work and different things. So they pulled some stuff together from their different committees and things they'd worked on and then we got a list of every charity nonprofit that we knew of in the county and we sent it out to all of them to apply for it. And they were allowed to apply for it, that committee. And they were allowed to apply for it, that committee reviewed it, and then they made recommendations to the court of what, who should get the money based on the needs and what they were asking for. I don't remember seeing one from the, they didn't apply for it.
I appreciate you advising us that information, but that's not the point. You know, I know that we did have a committee appointed, and that what you're saying is to be true. I did not realize that that was taking place, in which that's probably my problem, I found out about a couple of weeks ago. The grant work status I have on November the fourteenth, there were, I believe it's correct as such, but I was looking at some of this other stuff. I wanted to find out, basically, we plan on putting all these different deals down there of Mary Puddin Hill. I don't know whether there's enough room for all of it, but we need to expand, there's no doubt, but also what we need to do is figure out other facilities. We're going to move the veterans' place down there, is that what you're, the veterans' ministry?
No, not veteran, all of you're saying is how we've grown, that was just an example of how much we've grown, and we've had to move people out into other spots, and I don't think it's going to be efficient for us if we keep having offices scattered around all over town, and, and then the public, the public has to go try to find where they are. It needs to be in one central spot where they know where to go, and, you know, hopefully, you know, depending with some, the planning, that we'll be able to get all of those back under, you know, at least one larger building where the public will be more familiar where those offices will be located.
I guess my point is, we're not having all those different places moved out there.
No, the only, only people that are proposed and what's being designed is for the county clerk, the voter's administration, homeland security, which includes the fire marshal, environmental enforcement, and everything that they do, and nine-one-one addressing, and community development, and the health department, environmental. And we're, we're doing health, health department, environmental, community development, nine-one-one, all out there in the same, same area of the building, same lobby area when you come in, because if you build a house in Hunt County, or you come to do a development in Hunt County, you have to visit all three of those offices. And today, one of them's in this building, and two of them are at the courthouse. And sometimes you have to go back and forth. So we're going to have them in one spot where, when the public goes in, they can go in and get their answers to all their questions, get their permits, if they're ready for the permits, if they filled out all the paperwork, and they don't have to make a bunch of trips around. So make it a whole lot more efficient for the public. So that's all that's going out there at now, at this point in time. And we, we did, we wanted homeland security out there, it's on the interstate, so it gives us a police presence out there. So hopefully that'll deter anybody that, you know, wants to do anything they shouldn't be doing. And we may have to have, when we get there, we may have to have some other security too, but we're going to secure our workers that are out there working, but we thought it'd be a real good deterrent to have law enforcement on site.
Judge, I wanted to give the other, other commissioners an opportunity to jump in because I think my position has, has been stated at other meetings, but I'll restate it anyway. I, I'm not in favor of this project, or any frankly major capital project, until such time as we have a full capital plan for this county. This was a big issue, we discussed it at length during the budget process. I've been very vocal about this prior to that time, all the way back to when we initially moved funds into capital improvement for, for being used, for planning or other purposes. My position on that has, has not changed. We do have a, a whole bunch of needs, and you've stated many of them correctly. The district court, that's a big deal, and that's a, and we're, the clock's ticking on that. Voter administration, that's a big, a big need as well, and there are others. But this project, we can critique the specific project, but I want to make it clear that it's not even necessarily all the specifics of this project I'm opposed to, it's that we don't have a plan for the full total capital needs of the county, and we need to have something, and we don't. That being said, there are some concerns about this specific project. One is, I don't think it really solves our, our needs, our long-term needs are for office space for our county employees. When we had these, this first draft from the architect of potential ideas, I, I asked him in this court, what the growth potential was for these different departments as planned, so it could be changed, I guess, but, and he shared that it was one to two staff per department. Well, that's, that's not remotely close to our, our long-term needs. At this rate, by the time we move into that office, we'll be needing more space already. In addition, there's a number of offices, and while I like the idea of centralizing as many of them as possible, it may not be economically feasible or prudent or the best use of funds to do so. So there may be certain offices that could be moved offsite, like the VSO, and simply moved into a rental, a rental space, which I think has worked well, is fairly economical, doesn't major, doesn't require major cash outlay. And there are other offices that could be used, could be moved in a similar fashion. Part of the reason we need a, a plan is because, as, as you identified, we have a number of facilities already that we already own, one of them being the building we sit in. And it may not be suitable for a lot of purposes, but we don't really have an idea of what purposes it could be used for. We have the exchange building, and that could solve tons of space issues. We have leases, but those leases will expire. So if we have a capital plan, it could include planning that when those leases expire, they will not be renewed, and we will use that facility over there. There's, there's a number of potential ways to solve this problem that do not require thirteen point five million today, doesn't require using all of this ARPA funding. And again, whether we like this specific project or not, we desperately need a full capital plan before we go start dropping all the money that would be potentially the seed money for meeting these capital projects once we have them planned. There was a number of items you listed, mentioned today, back during the budget process, you've mentioned a number of other items as well. And so some of them require some, a million dollars or some, some significant sum. I think, I'm reaching back in my memory vault now, but I think one of them was air conditioning units for the jail and that sort of thing. Well, I mean, that's, that's gonna, that's gonna come from somewhere. We could solve that problem with this funding that we would otherwise be spending on the Puddin Hill project. So I think there's, I think this is, this project is way, is way premature for, for funding, and we should not do it.
Any other comments? Public getting comments?
If we get a star, if we dedicate this money for that, does that mean we have to do the whole project to completion, or?
I mean, I'm kind of looking at this money as a one-time.
Yeah, would you pull your mic down, my friend? Thank you.
David, we moved fifteen million dollars over there, I think July or August of twenty-three to fund this project, and since then, that has been eaten away for other things, but there, last count, I think there's twelve million left, eleven or twelve million dollars left, of which, you know, that some of the other things that's been talked about for money for some roads or, you know, other things could be now spent out of that, that would free up, this money would free up some of that capital improvement money that could be used for others. Of course, with the budgeting process, we moved two million a contingency out of our budget into that budget to handle some, the deficit that we were experiencing in our, in our budget. So it's been eaten away this year, and it's going down, but with the, with this money, there still will be somewhere, I think, close to ten million dollars at the end of the year left in that. I mean, I'd have to get with the auditors and attorneys and do some figuring, but I think that's about where it'll be.
Tracy.
There'll be some money left. There, there's money currently in capital improvement that we can dedicate for the, the completion of this project.
Now, I understand this, that I believe it was last week that we set aside the difference in reference to those radios, and that came out of capital improvement.
You're right.
Yes.
My question is, if we take and dedicate all of this money or part of this money, does the project have to be always completed? Or say we had enough to get the architect paid for and get the outside shell completed, and we finished the inside later or whatever, ten years down the road or whatever, do we have to complete it all right now?
Well, I, I don't.
Is this a lump sum money that we have right now? If you're going to put it on a long-term project, if it makes sense, or would it be better to put it off onto another project?
Oh, I mean, I, I think this, I mean, if we don't, if we don't use the ARPA funding for some of it the way we're spending the other down, we will not have the money to do the Puddin Hill project, or at least not in its current proposal. You know, if we approve this money today that's a little over six million, and then, and we can't totally fund the, the rest of it, which is projected around thirteen million, we could certainly, you know, get most of the project done, get the shell finished, and get most of the offices moved, and we just have to scale it back some, or scale back some part of it, maybe not do all of the outside skin that they're recommending to do, we could probably leave the back off and then replace it at a later date, so. But we should, with all the projections now with our money, we should have the money to award a contract in, in the spring of twenty-five and get the project built and still have money left in capital improvement to do other things.
I guess where I'm going with the question is, if we take the six point, whatever million and put on the project, and that's not enough to complete the whole deal, like say we just did one office, move the voter's admin out there instead of renting a place for them to go into, or we decided just to put the clerk out there for right now to make room for them, is that possible that we can do that? It doesn't have to be all the way completed, is what I'm asking.
I guess anything's possible, but the, the design of it, there's a lot of big things that have to be done first to be able to occupy all of it. I mean, you got, I think it's got three separate heat and air units going in to cover different parts of the building, so you'd have to identify which, how those were going to be done to, to finish that part of it, but there's a lot of ways we can talk to the architects and scale it back. But again, I, you know, with all of the needs in the county, and, and, you know, Mark, it's not like, you know, you're saying we haven't done, thought about any of the rest of it. We, we paid the architects to come in and review the courthouse and the, and the offices moving out, and to work with us moving forward on how to repurpose all of the offices that we're leaving. And plus this building over here, they spent time in this building, they spent time at the courthouse, they talked to offices that are moving out, and they talked to offices that are going to be moving around in our buildings. So there, there is a discussion going on and a plan going on with architects on how we could best utilize what's left in the courthouse. The big thing with the courts buildings, or the courts, the county clerk's office is the only room in the courthouse that's big enough for another courtroom. It's probably close to being as big as the three fifty-four. Well, one ninety-six, I believe, is the biggest courtroom in the courthouse, but it's big enough to house a courtroom. And, you know, Judge Bench was in six weeks of trial a few weeks back, and had three different back-to-back trials, his docket got behind. He wished he'd had a, another courtroom where he could have had a visiting judge come in and help move his docket along. He did do that a few days when a courtroom was available in one of the county court laws, and I think they even come over here and use ours occasionally. Ours is not set up for that type of courtroom, but they do, handling dockets, they do come over here and use this some. But that too is pretty inefficient, if it was all over there, close to the district clerk, close to the, the support staff over there, it'd make it a lot simpler if they had it. So that's something that could be, it needs to be done pretty rapidly, and could be done right behind the move of the clerk's office out to Puddin Hill, that would free up that room, and, and moving HR out, that would allow us to make that room even a little bigger, I believe. And then that goes all the way around behind my office, which could be, probably could be made into offices for a future judge or staff. So that's, it's kind of a nice spot to be with, for a courtroom, that's a really good, we have a really good spot for them, and that's going to be something that's not going to be real expensive to, to make that change, so.
Ms. Ash, you have anything to say about your location?
Sure, come on.
Sorry, this is not about rats.
How many rats have you killed this week?
While y'all have been talking, I've been making notes because I certainly was not prepared for this. I have spoken with each one of you at different times, sorry. Now I've changed this, here we go. And I would welcome a personal visit from each one of you to walk through my facility. What we did, when I got here, there were fifty-two, approximately fifty-two thousand voters back in twenty-twenty-one. We're currently serving seven, over seventy-three thousand voters in Hunt County. We have had, we have added close to five thousand just since June. Y'all, that's a lot. I have five to eight during an election season, which election season doesn't just start at early voting and end on election day, it actually starts six months in advance of an election. So as of next week, I will send out contracts for the November election, I'm sorry, for the May election, and we'll begin to participate with that, with the different jurisdictions. For an election, I have permanently five employees in my front office. When the previous administrators were there, we had three employees. We have set up folding tables for at least three temporaries to work off of when we come in for an election. So, and when I, with my five employees, they're literally on top of each other. There are some days that we have, of course, we have three lines that don't serve the county well, but it is what it is, phone lines. And in the very restricted space, they can hear each other breathe, they can hear conversations, they have to start conversations over because they're listening to somebody else's conversations because you have someone that's on the line that can't hear something. It's just not, it's not a good image for our county. Rat issues, that's a whole nother thing. I have currently killed, or we've currently killed three or four rats that are basically the size of my father's hand, fist, and those rats, I am by law required to have enough ballots on hand to facilitate an election. I have to have seventy-three thousand ballots, ballot sizes, which they come in eight and a half by eleven, eight and a half by fourteen, and eight and a half by seventeen. I have to have those in pre-printable ballot styles as well as thermal ballot styles. Those rats love your paper. Those are anywhere from forty-five, forty-five cents to seventy-one cents a sheet. Y'all, they go to the bathroom on those ballots, I have to throw them away, they're not usable. They chew the corners of those ballots. I have to keep them in inventory, or that's a misdemeanor on me, and I'm not willing to do that. The water issue, there is water running into my doors, they've tried to fix that several times. I can move part of my election equipment, part of the shelves, and there's holes in the wall. The maintenance is currently scheduled to come out again, probably the fifth or sixth time since I've been there, patch floors, move my shelves out, repair holes between the walls and the floors, and we'll have to do that again. Another water issue is the running water that comes out of the faucets. It is orange, it smells like sewer, and it's not drinkable. It is staining our toilets and our sinks. I can't even tell you what kind of chemicals maintenance has to pour down that and leave overnight, that we can't go into the bathrooms and breathe because it's so, it's so potent. We've killed two snakes, I call it now my wildlife preserve, because this is a business office, this is a professional office for our, for our county, and I'm currently killing a lot that maintenance is removing, I don't do that. The air conditioning unit that we have is not sufficient enough to keep up. Y'all, on an eighty-degree day, the outside, when the outside temperature is eighty degrees, my office will not cool down below seventy-three degrees. Currently during the election, or prior to election day, we come in on the weekends, and that unit went out, and I had to call Chris to come out on Saturday and on Sunday to try to fix our air conditioning unit because we were working in eighty-one degree temperatures. We were sick, we were hot, but that election equipment and those supplies had to get out to the judges and had to be. to the judges and had to be prepared for Monday delivery to the polling locations. We are growing, Judge, we are growing, and we are about to redistrict Caddo Mills, the Caddo Mills area and a couple of our other precincts. The storage is not sufficient for the new equipment that I'm going to have. Currently, I'm out of space. What we did for 30,000 voters when the previous EAs were there, we're, we don't have the space to grow. It is not logistically feasible for me to move my equipment to another location and to leave it there, because who's going to man my office when we're programming all of that? It takes days. I will have to remove batteries and V-drives out of the controllers and out of the other units so that we can prepare for the May election. I can't, I can't take my, my, my current staff off-site on another weekend to program those equipments. Currently, what we do is, we take one of the phone lines and we put it on the stairs so that we can hear the phones ring, and we put a bell at the front office that says we're working in the back. There's not enough to cover everything. Another issue, while the county has been able to negotiate with the city of Greenville to use Fletcher Warren as an early voting polling location for two weeks each large election, the city is under no obligation to provide that area for us, that we don't have the facilities to have early voting. My current, my current meeting room holds, by far standards, 30 people. We're serving 73,000 voters. On any given day, I can run 1,500 people through those, through my, my election, or through the voting room to vote. That's a long day. They're voting in the kitchen, they're voting, I probably should not admit this, but you're talking about lines, you're talking about providing services to our voters, we're not doing a good job at it, and I don't have anywhere to go, because again, Fletcher Warren doesn't have to, they don't have to obligate their facilities to lose two weeks of their profit. And also, we need to be able to provide a consistent polling location for our voters. Currently, if it's a small election, they can early vote at voter administration. If it's a large election, then they go to the primary. You are currently funding for me to put someone on the curb or inside the lobby of the AgriLife building to facilitate telling these people where they're supposed to go each election, because they don't know. And to be honest with you, up until an election happens, we don't really know where they're going to go either, because I have to look at how many jurisdictions are having an election, and then I have to beg Fletcher Warren or the city of Greenville to please cancel their events that they've already committed to residents in Greenville. They cancel some of those on our behalf, so while I'm here, I'd like to say thank you to Greenville, the city of Greenville, for letting us do that.
Why don't you let me, let you catch your breath just a second. In the layout of the new facility at Puddin' Hill, there is a community room that'll hold over 100 people, around 100 people, as a, for a meeting room, so with tables and chairs. So for early voting, it would handle more than that, and it's going to have an entryway that's going to be covered, so, and it's right beside the voters administration office, so when they're handling early voting, they'll be able to go to that community room and handle a pretty good size, if not this larger election as we've been having, in that community room. And on the other side of it is going to be homeland security and emergency management and a new emergency operations center that'll be hardened for, you know, against damage in event of a bad weather storm. It won't do a lot of other things, but it's to be hardened to be safe, and then if we have a huge catastrophe in the county, then the overflow of the staffing that'll need to be there and emergency directors that'll need to be there, it can flow into that room also, because it'll open out into that room. So it'll be a dual-purpose, nice room for both facilities that, when they need them, they need them really bad, and they need to be close to their offices where it makes it a lot more efficient.
Sorry.
No, you catch your breath a second.
Another, another point I'd like to make is that when I came on board, but y'all agreed to purchase equipment, new voting equipment, because what we had was failing. It was just black screens, it wasn't working at all, and currently, it is not in a temperature-controlled environment. So we spent several hours trying to facilitate and trying to go out to the 36 polling locations. We didn't have to hit all of them, but on election morning, it was, this court's not working or that's not working, and we have plans in place to make sure that there's no single point of failure. But again, to move all of 150 units to a different area is logistically not feasible for my office. This one kind of hit home for me, because when we're talking about the current facility that we have, the voters have to walk down that long hall. I recently, for the presidential election, met a 97-year-old voter that was trying to get down our hall. It was about 7:40, I'm sorry, 6:45 one evening during early vote, and she needed to make some corrections on her ballot by mail, and she, it was just, there was not a line in our office, because we had early voting down at Fletcher Warren, but I met her at the front door of the lobby and got a chair, and we had to cure her ballot, or make the corrections on her ballot by mail envelope, because she couldn't make it down the hall. That just hit home to me, because if that was my grandmother, I would want somebody to do the same thing. But people are always astonished, number one, that they have to walk down a hall for voter administration, because they can't find us, because we're, we're paired with AgriLife, they, they don't get that. But it's doable, but is that really what we, how we want to serve our voters? And the parking down there is limited. We had someone that ran over the, the light, the pole, and knocked down the pole, so we came in, it's actually been over a year. We came in and the light, the streetlight is out. We haven't had a streetlight, so when we leave at 5 o'clock or 5:30, or whenever we get to leave, it's dark down there, and if I have early voting in November, unless they replace that light, it's dark and it's unsafe, and it's unsafe for not only my staff, but also the voters of Hunt County. I will stop at that. I was not planning on speaking, but I would respectfully ask you commissioners to get ahead of our growth before it gets ahead of us.
Thank you. Commissioners, I'm like a motion that we dedicate all of the ARPA funding to the Puddin' Hill facility and move forward using it for both the 2.1.
Real quick first, Judge, if you don't mind. Tracy, last meeting, we had discussed whether or not this project would be eligible without including EOC and some other components in the project. Are you advising us now that all the restricted portion of the funds can be used for this project?
I think I can pretty much answer. Go ahead, Tracy, but I'll let you back me up, but what it said was not only it was EOC, it was 911 and, and public health, the health department, and really the fire marshal and all those other, our emergency people, is all of them plus all of the common areas, which is almost half of the building. And so half of the building is $6 million roughly, so the 2.1 restricted is easily going to be covered in those, in that area, and then the, what I'm, my motion is, it's 2.1 restricted and four, is it 4 points?
4.6.
4.67 in unrestricted money, be dedicated to the Puddin' Hill property.
Thank you.
And that's my motion.
I wanted, I think I had a question for Jeannie. Jeannie, are you aware of whether or not there might be other facilities and ways to solve these problems that you've enumerated? In other words, if we're, if we're planning and moving forward, are there other potential solutions than this project?
No.
Not that I'm aware of, not, not to the degree. My biggest concern, I can't speak for any of the other offices, but I can speak on behalf of my voters in Hunt County, and to me, those are my personal voters, they may be countywide voters, but we have to get a facility that not only serves them, but also serves them long-term. They can't continue, they will, but they can't, it's not fair to our voters for us not to have a plan in place long-term. You can move us to a different facility, I'm sure there's going to be somewhere that you can move us for three to five.
We won't find a place where you can also early vote.
Exactly, exactly. So when you're talking about long-term plans, think about, it's, it's a privilege, it's an honor, and it's our responsibility to provide accessibility to our voters. Providing accessibility and being consistent are one and the same, in my opinion, because it's, the staff that I put out in the front office, the absolute ridicule that we go through, no one should have to put up with that. Find a place that's consistent, that's long-term, that'll serve the needs of the community, at least for voters or for a clerk or whoever, and move forward. Continuing to jump around and patch things currently isn't working well.
We will. Thank you.
I'd like to make a statement in reference to this. Basically, we've been looking, trying to find that for I don't know how long, and other issues that there were in the past, basically, were to have, this is a discussion in between the vote. The other issues that we had in reference to that is trying to get the county to put forth to where you can actually vote any party of the area, and that was always been on your mind also, am I correct? That was a tremendous amount that it would cost us, and we've been going to do that for four or five years, but it hadn't happened, it hadn't happened. I say this right here, ever since in 2004, 2005, and '07, where we bought the house, the building across the road, here in this building that we have, we have the commissioners' court, also health, and the fire marshal, and EPA, and all that bit. We've got to do something in reference to the voters as far as that, because we're running out of room and all that. Now, as far as moving the veterans and all this bit down there, basically, I don't know whether that's going to be done. I know that the clinic's not, but there's no doubt that we need more, that we actually need more parking and stuff like this, and that's not the dual way with downtown. I've heard this come up, I don't know how many times. Basically, we need to improve the downtown, but this is possibly very much of a need, and it's been done, it's been needed a long time in reference to moving out. Now, all this bull about what's going out there, that's either here to be said or done later on in life. We have an obligation to do what we have, even though we do have room otherwise, basically, I don't know what the plans for the future commissioners' court are in reference to with this building that we have right now, or anything like that, but I believe it's been thought of in the future, as far as what to sell, what not to sell, and all that. The thing about this, we don't need to be renting stuff all over the place, I mean, it's nice that we are able to do that, but we need to go on and move a little bit forward, and especially if there's one reason to do that out there, it's basically as far as the voting aspect and the parking. I do not agree that this has taken us so stupid long and we couldn't get any answers, whether it be by grants work or whatever, even to decide in the past where money was going. Basically, we knew that it could be given to the radios as far as fixing the damage it took us, all year to figure that out, just to hear one person say, well, yeah, you can do it, when we knew it can be. That's what's going on. Now, we've come to the end of this month, right now, basically, we have to decide what 6.4 million, or whatever it is, is going to take place to where we can have it in the future, when this decision should have been looked at a long time ago, but it has been put off. And that's the only statement that I have, but I tell you what, we've got to look forward to the future, but even when we bought the building across the road, we were looking out for the future. When we kept this jail right here, we were looking out at the future. I've been there and doing this for 24 years, and I've never seen anything like it in my life, but on the other hand, we were now given $19.5 million by the bad gun feds. Am I making sense? Am I right? So all of a sudden, we got all this money, we're giving it away, and all this bit, and then we haven't decided what should have been decided three or four months ago, but we're hanging right there at the last. We owe it to our citizens in reference to having a place to go vote, there's no doubt about that, and that's all I have to say.
Ms. Ash, thank you for your presentation. Judge, I second your motion.
All right, got a motion and second, any other discussion?
Yes, Judge, I'm, I'm not done, I would like to speak again, if I may. The county is on, Jeff, would you like to speak? Go ahead.
That's not for the court.
We're, we're, we're not stopping it, we've already asked the question, so let's finish our discussion.
Jeff was trying to speak before the motion was seconded. That being said, the county will find, if it does not already understand, that we are on the front end of accelerated crazy train. With this growth, the ongoing needs of this county will become more urgent and more pressing. Without a plan, we will be governed by the tyranny of the immediate and the urgent, and that lack of planning, that lack of foresight will be subsidized by the taxpayers and their tax dollars. While I 100% agree, we need a new voter administration facility, in the grand scheme of things, if we slow down and develop a plan before we enter into any major expenditures, we will be able to accomplish more with less over a greater period of time than we would otherwise. This voter administration situation is actually an example of what I'm talking about, because this could have been addressed years ago, but because there is no plan guiding our decisions, this court seems to wake up in a new world every year, and it will be worse, the consequences will be worse, we're heading for a cliff that we are not prepared for. The turnover on this court is, is normal. Commissioners, come and go, and without a plan to guide the different iterations of the court and the people that constitute it, we will again wake up in a new world every day, and then we'll find that the Puddin' Hill project, the Puddin' Hill facility is already inadequate for its needs. We will be outgrown there. The original rationale for purchasing that was because of its proximity to a future jail site, and that it could be used potentially to lessen the cost of that project by providing office space for SO and other law enforcement agencies. The mission changed, and it didn't change in this court with the agreement of these, these commissioners, where the public can see it happen. So if you want to put the money toward that, I can't stop you, I'm just one vote, but we'll be back with more urgent priorities.
Mark, I'm going to disagree with most of what you said. We've talked about this project for two years. It came up when we were looking for land for the jail at the recommendation of a committee we appointed to help us move forward with getting a new jail. We found the property out, that city happened to be buying 600 acres, and there was 60 acres left, and it turned out that was a good spot at a good time for the location of the jail. Just so happened that this piece was next door, a building on it that was being vacated, and inquired if it could be purchased. This court thought that was a really good idea, that in the future, as has happened in Rockwall, as has happened in McKinney, as has happened in Kaufman, their courthouses and their public, public offices have moved out to the interstate, moved out of downtown, the downtown areas have revitalized themselves, and there's very few government offices left in, in some of these downtown. So we looked at it and talked about it, that could be a future campus of, that would facilitate with the 80-some, 80-something acres that we have out there, that not only house a future jail, a future courts building, and future office spaces, as well as maybe a courthouse at some point in time in the future. We probably passed all of our time when we built another courthouse or see a need for it, but that was the whole discussion. We did talk to the architects at the time to see if we could convert the building at Puddin' Hill into jails and jail cells, and they said that would, they did not recommend that, that the cost of that would be too expensive, plus the lay of the land is such a long, narrow building, it wouldn't be very efficient to use as a jail, and they recommended against that. We talked to them about utilizing it as a sheriff's office, if we cut that out of a jail program and wanted to do it, but it was going to be too far apart. I mean, it was feasible if we had to do it, but it was more practical to build it where the jail is planned to be, which is on the far side, back side of the property, so it's out of sight of, pretty much of the interstate. You know, some of the feedback from the election, when we voted the bond down, was, you know, they didn't know where it was going, they didn't want to be in their neighborhood, they didn't want to be anywhere, things, places. didn't wanna be, you know, anywhere, things, places where they went. So, that's a perfect place for the jail, because nobody wants to go out there to the sewer plant, and it's right beside the sewer plant. And, uh, so it was, and it's been talked about. And we talked about the purchase of the land, we talked about architects for planning of it, we talked about hiring them to make a design so we could occupy it. They made presentations to us, they've been here. I don't know where you been, you keep talking about a plan, a plan, this is a plan. It is a plan forward that we can act on today and that we can get moving, and if you wanna start another plan to see what we do with all the rest of it in the future, I'm all for it, let's go. But this is part of a plan we've talked about for two years nearly. And you keep saying we didn't, but you voted for every bit of it. If you had any hesitancy at the time this started, why did you not vote against it? Why did you let it continue? You never raised these issues. You never raised the issues when the architect was hired, you didn't say, no, we don't need to do that, we need to do this big grandiose plan. You said it was okay and you voted for it. So, I understand why you're changing it now.
That is not true. I have been calling.
It is totally true. You go back and look at the tapes.
Well, you're welcome to do so. I've been calling for a plan ever since we moved money to the capital improvement. I said, I am very, I'm uncomfortable with this, and yes, I'll tell the public today, I should not have voted for that because I should have anticipated that you would abuse that process to push through your pet projects without the, the benefit of a fuller plan.
I don't know.
I have been calling for a plan.
My only project is try to accommodate this.
Judge, 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 you're interrupting. I have been calling for a plan in which this would be one project, and it may eventually be a good project, but we're not there yet. You keep pushing a project, that is not a plan.
All right, I've got a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
We did not follow Roberts rules.
We don't, we, we do not, we.
It's a lawyer's decision, that's not your.
No, we don't follow Roberts rules, we never approved it. We never approved Roberts rules for this court.
Is there no public comment here today?
I asked you earlier, and then we went into the vote, and I'm, we're not taking, I'm calling for a vote. Sheriff, get him in order, please. All right, I've called, we called for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed?
No.
Is it four to one? It's four to one.
Always in the way.
All right. Daniel, if we need anything in executive session?
No.
Okay. Entertained a motion to, Commissioner, y'all got anything? Entertained a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second, all right. Got a motion and second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. 11:32.
We have a candidate to run against the judge. Stay tuned.
Let me see that.
Yeah. I got one for the US Capitol.
That's cool.